First, start with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning.
Good morning.
Next I have is the approval of today's agenda.
Make a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. BJ?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is approval of minutes of 4/29/2020 and 5/4/2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 29th and May 4th, 2020.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now I have a motion to correct the scrivener errors of air in minutes from April 15th, 2020. The correction is to change the reference from Section 13 to Section 16 in the minutes regarding the Ferris Pork Site CAFO permit application.
I'll make the motion to approve the correction of the scribbler error in the minutes of April 15th, 2020 as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Jess said she sent it to Angela wrong. Any other discussion? Thank you. Hearing no more, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now I have approval for claims for payment of 5/13/2020.
I'd make a motion approving the claims for payment as presented for dated May 13, 2020.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now I have utility permits. I have two of these.
I'll make a motion to approve utility permit number UT-20-021 for underground construction by Heart of Iowa Communications.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 And...
Motion carries.
Okay, and then I'll make a motion to approve utility permit UT-20-022 for underground construction by Windstream Iowa Communications LLC.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. BJ?
Aye.
Motion carries. Secondary Roads, Taylor.
Yes, I just wanted to, I've already left Iowa Falls Paper no and the Hubbard Paper no, like the road between Hubbard and New Providence, the highway, it's going to be closed intermittently for probably next month. There's a bunch of culverts to replace, so the plan is you get it all ready, so you show up that morning, dig it out, replace it, so hopefully it's only closed during the day. There's a couple of times where it's too big, it'll be closed at night, but yeah, if we can just close it for a day and move on and then move to the next one, that's the plan.
Which road was that?
The Highway D-55 between Hubbard and New Providence.
Okay.
Taylor, since people like me forget about these things, can you remind people that the bridge to Gifford is closed?
Yes, and the bridge to Gifford is closed, yep. And yeah, it's all, you know, if people want to go up and sign up for our road notifications, then they would get an email letting them know every time we close a road as well, so.
Can you do that through our website?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what I figured.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Next I have is the Recorder's Monthly Report.
I'd make a motion to approve Recorder Cadres Monthly Report as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? For the month of April. Any other discussion? Hearing no more, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is the approval of the 2080 agreement with IG HCP.
I will make a motion to approve the 2080 agreement with IG HCP, Iowa Government Healthcare Plan.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. BJ?
Aye.
Motion carries. I don't know if I'm, you're saying it and I'm not hearing it, or I just want to make sure you're in here.
So I'll wait a second and then say it.
Okay. Next is the appointment to IG HCP Board Representation.
I spoke with the Auditor's Office regarding this, and it sounds like a majority of, well, not a majority, I don't know majority, but that there are a number, quite a number of county auditors that actually serve in that position, so I would make a motion to appoint Jessica Lara to the Board, as the Board Representative, and I would imagine in her absence, if she's not able to go, then she has an employee that she can send.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I know BJ said he would be happy to do that. I think if Jessica can't do it, we should probably put an alternate to this as well. Therefore, we still have a voting member. So with that, I would look at probably doing something on next week's agenda for an alternate then.
Okay, I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing no more, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next I have is an approval for open enrollment of 2020, 2021. This is May 18th through May 20th, there will be an open enrollment Zoom meetings with IG HCP at 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM. Becca will send out link to all employees by the end of the week. Open enrollment will be May 18th, 2020 through May 27th, 2020, and will be through IG HCP.
I will make a motion to approve the open enrollment for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year with IG HCP.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next I have is a recommendation to the DNR in the Animal Feeding Operation Construction Permit Application, Tribe B Site, Section 8, Alden-Harden Township. Seth had contacted yesterday, asked if he could say something prior to this. Could we unmute Seth? Yeah, go ahead, unmute that one. So Seth, are you on 7190, last phone number digits? And if you're not, I need to know who that is for the minutes.
John Zimmerman Green.
Okay, thank you, John. Seth up there with, under Brandy?
Oh, all right, okay.
All right, Brent and I are in the same place, keeping our six apart. You know, the only thing we, you know, kind of wanted to say, we, you know, done our best to clarify, particularly the compost points, and we feel like we're referencing the Iowa State publication the same as what's been previously done, and we meet the requirements that have been passed, what's been accepted in the past. Ours is very similar to that. No maps or building designs were submitted previously. Do you want to talk around at all? That's, that's kind of our point on that one.
Okay, thank you. Well, there I will go to Jess.
So for, this is for the Tribe B site, that Alden-Harden, Section 8, I believe. And the only issue I had with their master matrix was the, were the points that they took for, I think it's item number 16, which is regards composting structures, and I don't believe that there was sufficient detail included in the original application, and I don't think it's, well, let me explain. Things have changed. I think two years ago, we did allow people to submit additional information after they had already submitted their application, but like I said, status quo can change sometimes, and so now I think that everything really needs to be included with the original application. We did, I did get more information from Seth of Tribe B, but that was after the application was already received, so I would recommend that you deny the Tribe B Farm Site application to the DNR, because with not receiving the points for number 16, they would not meet the minimum requirement of 440 points for their master matrix.
So if that's what we do, then they have the opportunity to resubmit?
They could resubmit, and also, I don't know if the DNR would approve or deny the application even based on our denial recommendation. The DNR very well could approve their application, but I'm not certain of that, so.
Okay. Okay, then on the recommendation of our zoning administrator, I will make a motion to deny the Tribe B site for Section 8 in Alden-Harden Township.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? This one's a tough one, because we've done it before for other sites to be able to submit afterwards, and I know we are trying to change the status quo so that it is all, once you submit, that's where it needs to be, but when they bring up the point that we've done it before, that's really tough to say that we won't do it again. In my mind, I believe there are good family farms, but I also, I also agree with Jess, and that's what we hire her to do, and this is her recommendation.
Can I also say that there was a lot less information included in their Design, Operation, and Maintenance Plan than was submitted even with the original, and we're referring to the Kyle Jane Site on 125th Street. What was submitted is not exactly the same. There was far less information included in this application than there was in that original application.
Okay. BJ, did you hear all that?
I did.
Okay.
So do we then, from here, send this on to the DNR with our denial recommendation, and, but they can still approve it?
Correct.
All right.
And then there were three emails, if I recall, that wanted sent with them?
Oh, yes, so we had one from Donna, the written comments?
Yep, the written comments.
Donna Juber, one from Julie Dunn, and those were just summaries of what they sent during their...
And then another one from...
And then one from Amy Hosse.
Amy Hosse. Okay, just making sure I didn't forget any of those. Those will be sent along with them.
Yes, all of, any written comments we received will get sent along with the applications to the DNR.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Would, would you maybe recommend that Seth or try, someone from Tribe B send along, or is it too late for them to send comments?
They could separately contact the DNR and tell them.
Okay. Okay, all right.
I mean, I just, I just think that it's, they, they did their part, something didn't get put into the application as a reason to fail, I believe it probably would have passed had that been put in there, hands down, or if we allowed it to come back in later, through, through our matrix, not the DNR. That's up to them. So just wanted to throw that out there. Any other discussion? Then I will ask for a roll call.
Renee.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Next is a recommendation to the DNR on the Animal Feeding Operation Construction Permit Application, Ferris Pork Site, Section 16 of Ellis Township.
So there was a problem with, the only problem, I would say, everything else looked great, with the Ferris Pork Site application, is that they took points on, I think it was Matrix Item Number 23, don't quote me, sorry, I didn't read that.
That's what you have in the notes, anyway.
Okay, okay. For the family farm tax credit, I reached out to our county assessor and the county auditor, who then reached out to the state, the Department of Revenue, who confirmed that Ferris Pork Site is not eligible for the family farm tax credit, and in not receiving those points, they do not meet the minimum point requirement of 440 points to pass their master matrix. So I would recommend that you deny this application to the DNR as well.
Okay.
I'd make a motion denying the Ferris Pork Site, Section 16 in Ellis Township, permit.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I just want to thank Jessica for confirming with everybody involved, including Auditor Laura and people at the state, to make sure that everything was as she thought, and that confirm and verify, and so I appreciate looking into the entire process.
Let's go, let's go ahead and unmute Dell quick.
Yeah, Lance, before, before that's approved, the email that I sent you guys yesterday, I kind of got ahold of Joel Gabriel, Gabrielson with the Iowa Department of Revenue, who I think that was Jessica Lara's contact, and it's correct. Despite there being some gray, I think in the, in the rule, it's the 10-acre that's actually owned by Ferris Pork, that's kind of the sticking point. Ferris will, I mean, they'll eventually own that, the entire piece of ground, that's the long-term plan, and they, they're going to buy more ground off their grandpa, so I'm, I'm kind of wondering how, you know, if they take those steps to, to own more than 10 acres there, where does that lead the, the application?
Do they then reapply, or if they purchase the 10 acres, or the additional acres?
Yeah, you, they would have to reapply.
Okay.
Dell, did you hear that answer? Reapplying for the application after they've acquired the 10 acres?
Yeah, so it's not, it can't be tabled?
The, the, the current application doesn't meet the requirements. As of right now, even if we did table it, we can't change the application, so we would need a new application that is correct after they've acquired the ground.
Yeah, okay.
Did I say that correct? That's how I would think it would go, yes.
And I would strongly, and I know he talked to Joel Gabrielson already, but I would confirm again that, and probably receive an email, well, yes, an email from Joel Gabrielson or Jessica Lara would need to be included with the application stating that they do now, would now qualify with that 10 acres.
Okay, did you hear that, Dell?
Yeah, I did. I can get that from him as well.
Is that on a different, on a different application, though?
It would be for the new application.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I'm saying when they submit their new application, they would need to include that information as proof.
Okay.
And...
Or that could...
That's, those are the only disputed points on the matrix, everything else?
Correct.
There's no other dispute.
Correct. Well, is there any comments? BJ?
Nope, I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm just happy that Jessica Sheridan does her due diligence. I'm glad that she was able to work with the state and Auditor Laura to come to the conclusion that's, you know, legal, fair, and, you know, that the due diligence and homework was done appropriately. So again, that, that's all we can ask, and we have to put our confidence that everybody's doing their job.
Renee? Well, hearing no more discussion, roll call.
BJ?
Aye.
Renee?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye. Motion carries. Next is a change of status to the Community Services.
I will make a motion to approve the employee change of status for Mary Nelson. She is the Friendship Club Coordinator, and this will be a furlough due to COVID-19. She will return to employment when a date can be set to reopen the program, and this will be effective May 11th. Her last day of work at this point is May 8th.
Okay, I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is change of status, Secondary Roads.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of status for the hiring of Cole Birchmeier as the Heavy Equipment Operator in Secondary Roads at $21.39 an hour, with a $0.25 per hour raise after six-month probationary period. That's effective May 18th, 2020.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Taylor, is this, this is the position in the Iowa Falls shop, correct?
No, he will be working out of Radcliffe. We're just going to have to shift some guys around.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Any other discussion? Hearing no more, all in favor say aye.
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 And then I'll make a motion to...
Motion carries.
Oh, I'll make a motion, sorry, to approve the employee change of status for the hiring of Paul Martin.
That's next week. That's IRVM.
Oh, I thought it was under Secondary Roads. You're too efficient. You get that to us too soon. Confuse me. All right, sorry.
Motion fails for lack of second. It's not on the agenda. Next is the COVID-19 update. Can we get Thomas to go in here? Or is it going to be somebody else?
Nope, it was Thomas.
I'm here.
Okay.
So first of all, I just looked at the Iowa Coronavirus Site this morning. There has been 3.15 million people, I'm sorry, there's been 1,250 people tested in Harden County. I calculated that out, that's less than, that's a .07% of our population tested. In some perspectives statewide, even though the press is putting these numbers out there quite widely across the state as a whole, we still only have a death rate of .003%. And in Harden County, the tested population is less than 1%, we're .07% of our population tested. Statewide, that is, again, less than 1% of the state population has been tested, even though we have counties that are, are very high and very hot. As far as what we've done in the county, we have pushed out 18, between 18 and 20,000 pieces of PPE, 7,000 isolation masks, 3,000 N95 masks, 4,000 gowns, almost 2,000 face shields, and we continue to, to push that number. We're ordering gowns and isolation masks and N95s that are rated around 200 to 300 per week, as we can only do seven-day ordering for our healthcare facilities. So even though people are starting to talk about opening up, the problem's going to be the PPE, and I was on the call yesterday with ISAC, and they had the state judicial, county supervisor, county attorneys, auditors represented on this call. The court system is looking at opening up court, and that's going to include having to round up PPE for them also, so they were reminded that we still are having shortages in the PPE world for the healthcare. So anything that gets opened up, two things, and I just finished the call with the state, two things are still going to happen. PPE is going to be required, and social distancing's going to be required for any activities that open up, probably clear through the summer into the fall. The Harden County Fair Board met last night, and I got an email from Dale Jazz this morning. There aren't going to be any grandstand events, and they are trying to figure out how to maintain and continue with their livestock shows. They're working that out, and I'll be working with them some on that. And we continue to have our weekly EOC meetings and looking at what we can do to keep processing some of the different requests that come into the EOC. That's the end of my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
From there, I am going to go to public, well, do you or BJ have anything? BJ?
I don't, thank you.
I don't either.
Then I will go to opening it up for public comment, and now people can unmute themselves.
Dave, I have, I have one comment or one question more.
Yeah, Dave, go ahead.
It concerns the IG HCP 2080 agreement.
Okay.
We just met last night, and this was not on my radar or on my agenda, so I'm wondering if the county's approval of it includes the City of Eldora and the others that are in the county group. Otherwise stated, do you expect that the city council, we can meet in special session to approve it if it's up to each individual entity that's, you know, included in, in Harden County's affiliation?
I will double-check. I believe you are.
Yes.
Yes, it does, Dave. Becca answered that.
It actually covers all the entities that currently are covered under the county's insurance plan. So everyone will remain covered under, under Harden County's plan, which will now be IG HCP.
Yes, and Becca, maybe you've, you've spoken to Chandra or something, this, the open enrollment time is, I just want to make sure that's being communicated to the, to the city as well, because they'd have to do it, right? Our city employees?
Right, right, and Becca's going to send out an email with all that information, probably this week. Correct?
Sounds good, thank you.
Becca, am I correct? You'll be sending that out this week?
Yes.
Correct, yes, she said yes.
Yay, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Any other public comments?
Yes, Julie Dunn.
Julie, go ahead.
I'm wondering if it's true, we do have the training school here in this county, in this town, that staff exposed to positive COVID cases can go back to work after seven days. Are, is, is that true? I mean, it's, it's a rumor, but people don't know, and people who perhaps work at the veterans home, test positive, return to work before two weeks are out untested, have grave concerns about these things. We are not getting enough information. It's, it's just not good. How can we get more information? How can we know?
That would be state information, and we, yeah, we don't have information on that.
Thomas, is there anything you can answer on that?
Yeah, the guidelines did change. They already, they've cut that down, and they can go back as long as they're showing no symptoms, and they continue to take their temperature... temperatures. Um, those timeframes were, uh, changed last week with Iowa Department of Public Health. Um, I'm looking for that now on the, on the website. But yes, those changed, so.
I understand that, but shouldn't we be going by CDC? Um, rules, well, I know you don't have any control. I just want, thank you for your answer.
Julie, it's, it, we do go by CDC, but Iowa Department of Public Health, uh, because we are home rule, they do make the, the decision at the state level, what is necessary through, uh, the testing and the surveillance that they do at the state level.
Um, but, yeah, I understand. But when you send people back untested, um, it makes me feel like when people thank veterans for their service, for some people, it is, um, and then send, yeah, and then put them, veterans in veterans home in danger is, is, is just, oh, I can't even describe it. Thanks, I'm adding it. This is just not, it's wrong.
Thanks for correcting me there, Thomas. I, I guess I didn't realize that, that that had been changed, or I missed that along the way.
Are there any other public comments? Harry, no more public comments. I will go to other business.
I have no other business.
I have, thanks, Lance.
Then I could ask for adjournment.
Lance?
Well, I have, I have one comment.
This is Donna.
Donna.
Um, I was wondering how the revisions to your resolution are coming regarding, uh, the public hearings.
Darrell?
I haven't, I haven't drafted. I just haven't put it on your agenda yet.
Darrell has them drafted. He, I haven't seen them, but he hasn't put it on our agenda yet.
Can we be looking at that in what timeframe?
Next week.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other public comments? Now I could ask for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. We're adjourned.